Welcome to Murfreesboro City Council Meeting, December 3rd, 2015. Councilmember Eddie Smotherman has our prayer.
Thank you, if you would, by your head. Lord, we thank you for this day and the many blessings that you've given us. We're thankful for our wonderful city. We're so proud of Murfreesboro and we're so blessed. We're thankful for the staff that we have, our police officers, our firefighters, and all those that serve our city and make it better. Please keep in mind, all of us, the people who are suffering in California right now because of the tragedy that took place in the last couple of days. We're thankful for so much and we are so blessed and we are thankful. We just, we can't thank you enough for all we're given. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I'm sorry. Meredith Lee from Providence Christian Academy, she's a student who's here for Youth Leadership Rutherford. She's going to do our pledge of allegiance. I'm sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Okay, you have several items on the consent agenda that are before you tonight.
There's no comments, I'll move for approval.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, we call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Moving to third readings and consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15064 amending Chapter 12 Fire Prevention, Section 1227, Seasonal Use of Fireworks.
Move for approval.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Will consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 150Z54 to zone approximately 58.7 acres for Valley Brook located along Compton Road as planned residential development, PRD District, Green Trails and Kevin Estes applicants.
Move passage on third reading.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. 6.1 acres located along Roxborough Court as single-family residential 10 RS 10 District, Zolt and Rene Mueller applicants.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Moving to second readings and consider for passage on second reading ordinance 150Z58 to rezone an area located along Lytle Street to planned institutional development, PND District.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 150Z62 to amend the conditions applicable to approximately 9.7 acres and parcel E of the Victory Station Plan Unit Development, PUD District located along Fortress Boulevard so as to allow an aged assisted care living facility. Move for passage.
Second.
Motion is second.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 150Z59 to rezone an area located along Summit Court to duplex residential RD District.
Move for passage.
Second. Motion is second.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 150Z61 to rezone an area located along New Salem Highway to residential multifamily RM 16 District. Excuse me, multifamily 16 RM 16 District.
Move for passage. Second.
Motion is second.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We're going to move into old business and we're going to have a continuation of the public hearing with regards to ordinance 15057 amending Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 25 and a Quarter, Sections 25 and a Quarter 2, 25 and a Quarter 23, 25 and a Quarter 25, 25 and a Quarter 29 regarding exempt signs, temporary signs, and certain nonconforming signs. At the last council meeting, we did not close the public hearing, so technically our public hearing is still underway, so our rules will still be in effect, that if you spoke at the last public hearing, it will only allow people to speak one time, so anyone new who wishes to speak is welcome to come up and speak. If you'll state your name, state your address, you have three minutes unless you're representing a group, then you have five minutes. If you'll keep all your questions to the City Council, we'll do the absolute best we can to get those questions answered. So the public hearing is still open. Anyone wishing to come speak for or against, please come to the podium.
Mayor, council members, my name is Michael Scott. I'm here representing my business, Signs by Scott, and a lot of businesses in Murfreesboro. I've been in business probably 43 years. I've done business in five different states, probably dealt with 50 different sign ordinances. The sign people, as well as me, know the difference between good sign ordinances and bad sign ordinances. From day one, the sign people have not been included in writing ordinances. It's been non-sign people. And I understand from council members that I've talked to that they're tired of revisiting the sign ordinance constantly. Well, write a sign ordinance that sticks, that you don't have to change every 30 to 60 days. And every time it's written and changed by a non-sign person, it affects two other ordinances or parts of the ordinance, and then that in turn affects four more, and you multiply, eight, sixteen, and on and on. Murfreesboro has one of the worst sign ordinances I have ever dealt with in these five states. It needs to be corrected. And a committee of sign people, business people, and city people could write a good ordinance, given the chance, and you wouldn't have to revisit this constantly. The ordinance would not have to be changed unless there's a new type sign like the LEDs that came in. Then you would have to write something for that. But this is crazy, guys. You're just constantly, constantly changing this ordinance. I mean, if it's such a good ordinance, why are we constantly changing it? Because it's a bad ordinance, that's why. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Walsh. I live at 734 Greenland Drive, and I more or less have questions about the lighting on the ordinance. I don't really see why the lighting can only be colored during the Christmas months. I personally, I'm a fan of color. I like to see it. I like to shop at businesses with color and with nice colorful signs. And so I just, I don't really see how it benefits anybody to restrict the color to solely white during the rest of the year. Why, why do we have a difference? Why can't it just be colored all of the time? I just, I don't see how it benefits anybody or what difference it makes as to the color of the lights outside. Just a little confused. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Morgan Winfrey. I'm at 919 Northwest Broad Street, and I'm finding an issue with locating any reasons for this sign change. There's actually, I haven't found any public benefits at all to this. I can understand things like wanting to put emergency exits in a lot of the local businesses because I can find a reason there, you know? People need to have several exits in case of like a fire or any emergency issues that go on. I can see a reason with, you know, the way that stop signs are placed and reasons like that because, you know, it provides order and it provides safety. With this sign issue, I'm not seeing a whole lot of order, safety, or any kind of public benefits at all.
My name's C.D. Tolbert, and I live at 2103 Sherrard Boulevard.
Mr. Tolbert, did you speak at the last public hearing?
I did, in fact.
Okay, we're, the public hearing is still going on, so you get to speak at one time at each public hearing.
Okay, just once?
Yes, sir.
All right. I wanted to make a further statement according to the color, but I just, I agreed with her statements that I do not see a reason. I enjoy the color and I just find it unnecessary.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We will consider for passage on first reading ordinance 15057 amending Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 25 and a Quarter, Sections 25 and a Quarter 2, 25 and a Quarter 23, 25, 29 regarding exempt signs, temporary signs, and certain nonconforming signs. And I think what may be a good way to handle is, are there any particular areas in the ordinance that council members want to discuss individually?
Mayor, could we ask for Gary or Amelia to tell us how we, what was the process for this to get to this place? How did we get here? That was one of the questions that was raised by one of our, could they just kind of tell us how we got to this place with the sign ordinance? What was the process?
Good question. So the question is how we got to this place as far as the string lighting?
The procedure, the process that got this document together. How did we get this document together?
This has been a work in progress for several years. It originally started because we have had problems with the ordinance, and we are trying to do a complete overhaul of the ordinance. We're going to take and do a total rework of the permanent section, and this is the section that's just on temporary signs. So we started out with the temporary section, and this particular thing has been going on for about a year now. We had three public hearings, one special meeting, and a city bus tour with Planning Commission. We had two stakeholder meetings. We developed numerous proposed revisions to compromise cohesive enforceability of the temporary sign ordinance sections. And the staff was tasked with restructuring the entire sign ordinance. We believe this restructuring will add clarity and reduce confusion to better accommodate businesses, citizens, and sign companies to locate and understand regulations of temporary signs. This included removal and additions and restructurings of sections of the temporary sign ordinance that include definitions, prohibited exemptions from permit, violations and penalties, conditionally allowable temporary signs, and we proposed revised definitions and regulations to existing temporary signs, including window signs, vehicle signs, inflatables, and directional signs. Through the meetings with citizens, business owners, planning commission, and staff, there were important revisions made to several types of signs within the temporary signs section, and the significant changes included window signs, directional signs, inflatables, feather signs, other temporary signs, and string lighting. Through the current regulation for window signs today, all 15% of a window is allowed to have signs in all zones except the CBD, which will allow up to 50%. After several revisions to this section, the proposed allowable signage would be 25% in all ground floor windows and 15% on upper floor windows, and all windows on doors would be allowed 2.25 square foot on the window of that door. As requested by the sign companies for a compromise on the directional signs, which are less than four square foot in area, that those signs would not require a date of an event, and that feather signs would be allowed to be at an industry standard at 14 feet overall height as opposed to 12 foot overall height. Number and regulation of other temporary signs will be uniform throughout the city at three signs per lot of record, and all signs will be 32 square foot in display area and 12 foot overall height. String lighting was prohibited in Murfreesboro except from November 15th to January 15th, and only allowed in commercial highway and heavy industrial zones. The proposed revision would allow wider clear string lighting all year long and string lighting from November 15th to December 15th, and would be allowed in all zones. Non-commercial inflatables have been added to be allowed in non-residential zones for 30 consecutive days. That would be with a permit but without a fee. The proposal will allow provisions of exemptions for this ordinance amending code for window signs not to be effective until May 19th. This allows businesses with more than 25% of window coverage with temporary signs to come into compliance. And then on September 16th, Planning Commission recommended to council unanimously to have you review it, and I'm available to answer any questions any of you have.
Ms. Kerr, it's been stated that the stakeholders have not had the opportunity to participate and write in this ordinance. But what you just said about how many meetings and hearings and stakeholder meetings kind of negates that.
Yes, sir.
So from my understanding, the Planning Commission, who initially reviewed all this, welcomed all comers to make recommendations to this sign ordinance, and some of the good recommendations and changes came out of positive comments from the sign industry.
Yes, sir.
In your opinion, has the, the city staff and the Planning Commission had given an opportunity for the sign, professional sign people to participate in this process?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'm going to piggyback on vice mares. That's what I wanted to hear when we discussed this yesterday, the very same subject. And I commend you, Ms. Kerr, for your efforts in compliance enforcement and dealing with signs, because you know, this is not my favorite subject. So Mr. Scott, I'm one of these council members up here that's looking forward to getting out of the sign business. But I was on the Planning Commission from 1993 to 2002, so I've had a whole lot of conversations about signs. And as a council member, here we go about signs. I don't know anything about a bad ordinance, but Mr. Scott's right, I am one council member that's ready to get away from signs. But I do think that this ordinance, from what I understand, when you have stakeholders, I don't know if all the stakeholders knew what was going on, I don't know who they are, but if that effort is made and people had opportunities to participate in the process, I don't understand what the problem is.
Let me ask you, were stakeholders invited, or did they just say, here's the meeting and come if you want to? Is that, were they invited? Were the people specific?
Yes, they were invited. We actually have an email comprised of all sign companies, business owners who have shown interest in the past. We send out an email announcing when the stakeholder is going to be, and it is also published on the front page of the webpage as to when the stakeholder would be, and they could actually download what the actual ordinance was saying. That was presented for both of the stakeholder meetings. It was publicized for the special meeting with Planning Commission, and I do not believe any sign people showed for that one. We have had a few at Planning Commissions that were also advertised on the website, and we did send out notices for those as well.
You know, sign ordinance, I'm learning a lot as I've met with you and with Mr. Whitaker and all, trying to understand what this is. I'm particularly appreciative of the work that's gone into this to this point, but what I was telling people prior to the Planning Commission is, until we have a finished document which was presented to council, everything else is speculative and in process and being developed. So it's ability to change up until it gets to us. Now, what we're considering tonight is the definitive document that you will implement and enforce. A couple of concerns. First, the goal of this sign ordinance is, I've been told, not only by business people but from our staff, is to simplify it and make it enforceable. And both sides in this dilemma and controversy is, want the same thing, something that's simple, easy to understand, and enforceable. Because we have a very limited staff, and we're, and we want people to be able to comply with that. So I think we may have a couple of points that, you know, we've been in small business for 40 years, so I value what particular aspects of sign and what that means to my business. I think it's often the way we communicate with our customers, and it solicit, in a very economical way, new customers to be aware of what's in our business. We all are different in the way that we think and view the use of our windows. But I'm concerned when we restrict the opportunity for a small business to be creative and speak to their client base, their particular customer base. And when we do that, sometimes, you know, what is an expression, you know, I've gone by people's windows and said, they do a whole lot better job than I do. And I've also gone by windows and said, you know, I wouldn't do it that way. I wouldn't present it that way. So I think we have to be very cautious into what we write into statute and ordinances that restricts a small business ability to express themselves. And I'm not sure, in a couple of areas of the ordinance that's before us tonight, particularly with the string lighting issue, I'm concerned about string lights being defined as signs. I'm not sure about the, I'm not sure it's enforceable to say only during a particular time. November 15th to January 15th is a realistic window to say that they can be used. That part of it bothers me. And even the reference to string lights, you know, if you can use colored lights during Halloween and Christmas, why can't you use it during Easter and Valentine's or Fourth of July? You know, it bothers me that that's the case. And the reference to window lights, I spent last night going around town to identify places where there were, had been apparently some objections to string lights, framing windows. And I understand why people would object. Some of them, you know, the technology is kind of advanced with LED lighting now. It's highly intense lighting, not like string lights that I grew up with or that I would put in my window. I don't think, though, because when I go around the square, and if any of you leave here and go around the square, you'll see a lot of string lighting, framed windows that are subtle and beautiful. And they frame windows. And to keep those people from expressing themselves creatively, because we have stores of a particular commodity that use these bright lights, I'm frustrated that you're throwing the baby out with the bathwater. And so I'm concerned about string lights being used as window frames. I'm concerned about colored lights at any time during the year. And the other concern is, when we have percentages of windows that can be covered, I don't see how you're going to be able to enforce that, Ms. Kerr. I just don't see how that's realistic to expect you to look at a window at the front of a building and say, that's 25%. Without, I mean, I think what we're going to accomplish is people are going to get their math skills honed, where they can figure area of a window and the numbers and use their tape measures to measure properly, but I don't think we're going to get it right. Because if you say, I have 25% and I'm okay, and my neighbor has 30% or 35%, and you're going to require him to take something out of his, there's going to cause some problems between us. And I think that's going to be, that's not going to go where we, where we need to go, where we're causing businesses. I'm going to call my competitor, call him to account for the signs. He's got too many signs in his. I've counted and it's 40% in his window, and I've only allowed 25% in mine. And you're going to have to be the arbiter. You don't need to spend your time doing that. And I'm also concerned, I mean, there's only two ways it can be fair. You either allow nothing in somebody's front window, or you allow everything. That's what you can, that's what you can fairly arbitrate, in my estimation. And you can look at the front of a building, there's nothing in the window, or there's everything in the window. Anybody wants to. I was talking to businesses today, in fact, two people told me, in the same business, they're in the same business, one of them said, I like to have my place open because I want people to be able to see what I do, and I want my people to be able to see out. I don't want signs, and if my staff puts a sign up in the window, I take it down immediately. I said, huh, that's great. And the guy sitting right next to him, he's in the same business, said, no, not me. I want people to be able to see my specials when they walk in. I just am concerned that governments involved in something, when we do this kind of restriction on private, on small business, we have enough bricks on our load as small business now, and I just don't, I'm concerned this is another brick on the load of small business that is not appropriate right now. And I don't think we're there yet. I'm for temporary sign ordinance. There's lots of parts of this that I agree with, but those two particular sections, I had a question about banners, but I think I've resolved that with Gary earlier this evening. But the two, the string lights and the percentages in a window, in the front window concern me.
So Mayor McFarland, were you suggesting earlier, maybe, you know, if there's parts of this that we might need to iron out, I mean, without necessarily, speaking of kind of throwing the baby out with the bathwater, if we think there's a lot of pieces of this that we think are good, but there are some of these that, you know, just listening to you, to you talk, there's some things I agree with, there's some things I don't agree with, you know, I mean, just, and some of it, I guess, would be a matter of opinion, you know? So if we, you know, maybe string lighting was, you know, if that's, if that's one of the things that we might acknowledge that, hey, look, we might have some different opinions on what might be the appropriate thing, I wouldn't want to see us completely just say, well, let's scratch all the work and all the effort and all the improvement that is in here, just because we can't, you know, come to some idea of what we think is appropriate for string lights. So, I mean, you know, kind of my, what do you have?
No, I think you're, I think at the end, I think what may would be good is let's get a quick poll on string lights. And, you know, I think we're going to have to either vote whether you want, as a whole, do you want signs in the windows or do you not want signs in the windows? You know, right now, we're saying 25% of the main floor, 15% of the second floor. So, you know, we can take it piece by piece, or, you know, or talk about some of those things, but, you know, on some of the sign ordinances, I think there may be things that we're just going to have to, as a council, agree to disagree on what needs to be done, and we can do that when we, when we vote. But, you know, I think Mr. Shacklet brings up some, some good points. So let's, what are, what are our thoughts on string lights?
Let's ask Ms. Kerr what her reasoning on string lights is.
Can I ask you something for, can I plug something into that? Just because I think you might be able to answer this, too, is, you know, when, when I heard the lady come up and speak about the string lights, and then just listening to you talk, you know, one of the things that strikes me is, you know, really, I don't guess I have some major problem with string lights, but I guess I would say that it needs to be measurable and kind of quantifiable. I don't know that I'm willing to say you can't count them at all, and you can't, you know, you can't measure it, and you know, that you could just, you know... know, you can't measure it and, you know, that you could just, you know, put as many of them as you want to, wherever you want to, however you want to. I don't know that I'm really ready to say that either, you know? So, you know, like right now, we do have some ordinances in place for, you know, outline lighting. There's some good examples of that probably she can talk about, but, you know, we've got ordinances already in place that define how much outline lighting you can have around your building, like neon lights and that kind of thing. You know, so on the same token of, why is it any different to have colored or light or this time of year, that time of year? Why is it any different if it's on a string going around your building or if it's just a light that's contiguous going around your building? You know, we already have that stuff in place. So, I mean, if we can measure it and if it's a way that we can say, okay, look, we, and look, the part of this is, I don't, I'm, you know, this, we, we do, what we do is to say what we think is appropriate, you know? And so part of this of just saying, well, you know, should we be limiting businesses? I mean, we do, you know? In every aspect, in every aspect. And we try to limit that, you know? I mean, but we try to make it appropriate and fair. And I've struggled with it, too, you know? I just want to make sure we, as fair as number one. So anyway, I do want to leave it, yeah.
What was, what's the reasoning on the string lights?
String lighting was put into the ordinance in 1998. The way the definition of the sign reads, any type of illumination or illuminating device is considered a sign because it attracts attention to your business. So it stems back to the definition within the ordinance that has been in place since 1994. It just happened to have added string lighting in 1998. So from there, it was only allowed to be during the Christmas, excuse me, during the months of November 15th to January 15th.
Okay. Let me just, because in the definition, in the ordinance, string lighting, outdoor lighting of flexible construction used to outline, decorate any structure, including principal accessory structures, tents, parking, and other areas, which is not strip light or outline lighting. To me, if it's inside the structure, inside the window, which is what were the issues, the buildings that you were referencing me to go look at, they, all that was inside. It wasn't done on the outside of the frame of the window. It was done on the inside of the frame of the window. So the difference in what we've talked about, string lighting that's used to outline a building or something like that, is it's inside the building. It's inside your business. And I think that is the definitive kind of point of change that we're imposing some will on what somebody can do inside the building.
So I guess, I mean, I was thinking outside the building primarily, you know, when I was, when you were talking about that. You know, one thing that I've had conversations with, and I think we might need to add this to the, to the list of what we consider, you know, appropriate, is what we consider attached to the window or not. I mean, you know, for me, if you take something and tape it to the inside of the window that you can see from the road, or if you take something and tape it to the outside of the window, that all is the same to me. I mean, that's just my, that's just my opinion on it.
And I think the thing we have to think about, too, is whether it's attached or not attached. As soon as we say if it's attached, it's considered a sign, then what happens is the person comes six inches off the window and puts an electrical outlet there and drops a sign down, and that's not attached, but that's still a sign, you know? So there's.
Part of what we got to deal with.
There's, yeah, I mean, so I think.
Yeah. But Mayor, I agree. I mean, if it's not in contact with the window, I'm good with it. Somebody came to me today and they said, "Eddie, I understand I'm not going to be able to put a Christmas tree in my window." I said, "Where did you hear this?" And somebody had explained to them that had gone around talking to them about signs, said, "You can't put a Christmas tree in your window." I said, "Nothing could be further from the truth." I said, "What you do inside your business is your business." And, but I tried to explain to a lady I was talking to a couple of days ago, if it's laminated inside the window, if it's on the outside of the glass, or if it's taped to the inside of the glass, to me, that is one in the same thing because from the outside, you have the exact same effect. Now, you know, I'm all about simplicity in government. And I think it's a wonderful thing that we're going from 15% to 25%. And for me, that's simple to understand. If you've got four windows this size, you can put up one sign in your window that is this size in one of the windows and cover that window completely. If you have two windows that you want to advertise in, you would be allowed 25% of your total window space. And if you've got two windows, it's that size. It's that simple. If you've only got a window this size and you're going to put 25% coverage in it, your sign can be that size. It is that simple. I mean, this is not a complicated formula that we're discussing.
What if you have an arch, Eddie? What if you have an arch window? And what if you have a circle window? And what if you have, I mean, I understand how simple we can make it, but what I'm saying is, it's not as simple as we would like to think it is when she has to go out there and define what area is covered and is it actually 25% or is it 30? Or is it 35%? Or is it 20? I mean, those kind of figures are what we're requiring our enforcement people to have to come up with. And then also, the people that are doing it are having to figure it out. I don't, I don't think that.
But Bill, whether it's an arch or a circle is irrelevant unless you're looking at, because we're going by length times width, right?
Well, we would put it in a rectangular shape.
Yeah. So it's measured by a rectangular shape. It has nothing to do with.
Well, is that, that.
The measurements of signs, there's a section in the ordinance that tells you how to measure signs. And all signs are measured. If it's a sign that's a circle, you put a box around it and that's how you measure it.
It's height times width.
That would actually be to the benefit of that, of that type of a, of a window, right? Because you would get, you would be increasing the actual, yeah.
Right. And, I mean, we've worked on this for over a year now. And I mean, just because you've worked on something for a year doesn't mean that it's good or bad. I mean, but, but there has been a lot of effort and a lot of time that we have listened to the public. We've gone to small businesses. We've talked to people on the square. We've talked to people out in the community. You know, and when we talk about lights, I mean, you know, this new ordinance puts a prohibit on searchlights. And that's, you know, how is a searchlight a sign? But I understand it is the same effect as a sign because it's to attract attention at your business. And so the string lighting, I guess, is just a smaller version of that searchlight that could be put in front of your business to attract attention. The, as far as seasonal, it's not uncommon for us to have an ordinance that has a seasonal practice. I mean, fireworks is a perfect example where we say that you can fire fireworks from this date to this date because it seems more appropriate during that time period. I, you know, I'm not really hung up on string lights as far as that part of the ordinance goes. If we want to pull that part out of it and approve everything except for the string lights, I mean, I'd be good with that. But the, but, you know, and your philosophy of all signage or no signage, at one point, we were trying to improve the situation, which would be improving the safety for our police officers. And the intent was to have a free sight zone. So when you walked up to a business, whether you were a customer, or you were a firefighter, or you were a police officer, or an employee looking out of the building, you could see, and we live in a world of terrorism now, the sooner you see a bad situation, the better your chance of surviving it. And my point with that safe zone, and I, I thought it was a good idea, I still think it was a good idea. But, but when we were trying to implement that, we were trying to allow people 100% signage in your windows, with the exception of three foot to six foot. There were people who didn't like that. And I understood because their signs were already in that plane and they said, "It's going to cost me money." And we said, "Okay, well, let's don't do that. Let's don't put that burden on you. Let's, let's go ahead and just start enforcing it where we're at." Well, enforcing it where we're at, we're 15%. Just because you're in violation today, if we don't pass any ordinance, I still think we have the responsibility to go out and enforce the ordinance that we have on books. And the ordinance today says you've got 15% allowable signage per window. That's a lot more complicated than 25% total window space. And so I think we've really made an effort to simplify it so that people could understand it. And we also made the effort to allow businesses more advertising space than what they're currently allowed under the ordinance, the way it's written today. I just, you know, I, I'm, I talked with a guy the other day in a, in a shopping mall. And he, he was telling me, he said, "Eddie, somebody came by and told me I couldn't have my sign here." I said, "Your business isn't even visible from the roadway." And he said, "So what's that mean?" I said, "That means the sign ordinance doesn't apply to you." And he said, "Oh, well, that's fine then, isn't it?" And I said, "Yeah." And he said, "Well, I was furious at you because I thought I was going to have to take my sign down." And I said, "No, your sign is fine." It, but the misinformation that has been put out there has been, has been a terrible effect of trying to pass what I felt like was an effective effort to try and pass good legislation. Whether it's good or not, time will tell. I don't think there's anything in it that we can't go back and change if we say, "Look, guys, we've messed up something here." This particular part of this, this ordinance that we passed here has a flaw in it. It's a severe flaw. And it's hurting every person who has a car lot, or every person who has a floor shop, or every person who has a sign company. It's hurting them. I'll guarantee you, we can go back and change it. But with all the effort that has gone into this and trying to make this an enforceable document, whether it's a good enforceable document or a bad enforceable document, you know, I think there's, there's parts of it that, that I think are good and there's parts of it that I have concerns with. But, but it's been studied and studied and studied and we've got sign experts who work for the city who have studied it and said, "This is good." Our legal department has studied it and said it's enforceable. You know, and from a business standpoint, if you're, it's almost a situation that if you're not in code today, for some reason, you're against changing the sign ordinance. And if you're not in code today, you're probably not going to be in code when the new ordinance is improved unless you're between 15 and 25%. And then you could become legal just because we passed this ordinance. So it.
Could, could some, could you explain to me the 15% on the second floor? Because I don't understand that. Why is it just 15% on the second floor? Why does that? I mean, that, I mean, 25% on the first floor and 15% on the second? What's the logic behind that? I don't understand it.
I think it was intended just to be able to be allowed to have a name of a business on the second floor because right now, we don't have, but just very few businesses that have signs on second floors. And we wanted to be assured that they would be allowed to be able to have that signage up there. And the further, the higher up you are, if you, if you get bigger signs up there, then, then it's going to be more of a, an aesthetic value from a sight distance.
You see, signs and what, you know, we talk about what signs are supposed to do. And then when they do that, we're saying it's a, we need to regulate it. Like around a window of a frame, a string lighting around that, and it draws attention to your business? And somehow, that's not right? I am really concerned about that. Somebody, if you have not been in small business, then you don't understand what I'm talking about. You don't feel the pain. But trying to allow people to have creative control of their windows as opposed to having a restriction, I can't tell you if I'm surprised no one raised this at the planning commission level. I'm surprised that people haven't talked more dramatic about that. I don't want to be the, the only naysayer in this, but I can tell you, I have to say this, from a small businessman standpoint, this is not the kind of ordinance restricting what I can do in my business is not the kind of ordinance that I feel benefits small business and says, "We support you, small business." It says, "We are restricting you by some kind of figure that somebody arbitrarily is going to walk in your door and say, 'I'm sorry, your percentages are off.'" And so I'm going to take a pair of scissors and cut my, cut me down to 25% of a sign that I thought, and I've invested in, and some kind of presentation that I thought was going to bring business to me. The reason you don't have every small businessman here is because they don't understand what it's going to mean when we have staff go in their business and say, "You're going to have to change your ordinance. You're going to have to change your sign." If they knew that, and when that happens, they're going to go, "Wait a minute, is that's what that says?"
But wouldn't they be in the same situation, Bill? If, and certainly, we're not arguing. I appreciate what you're saying. But, but wouldn't they be in that same situation if the sign ordinance, people walked into their business today and told them, "Hey, your signage is supposed to be at 15%?"
Yes.
And, I mean, I don't see any difference.
Yes. And that's why I'm saying, there's only two ways to enforce this. Either everything or nothing.
Okay. Can I add to that? Can I just, I mean, it's one of the things that I'm, that I'm looking at when I think about either all or none. First of all, get it out there on the table. I'll not go for the all. I, you know, I don't want to have windows painted up from floor one to floor 15 all over town. And if you say one, and you might say, "Well, nobody would do that." Well, we got orange buildings with orange roofs. And if we just say, "There's no way we should restrict somebody's creative ability to bring business into their, you know, into their doors," Bill, I just have to disagree with you on that. There's all kinds of ways that people can get attention that are either inappropriate or, for whatever my opinion versus somebody else's opinion, shouldn't be the way that it happens, or dangerous. You know, one of the things about the 25% is that at least it does allow some capability for our public responders, our first responders, to see. We don't have the three to six foot thing, but if we do the 100%, that's out completely. So I just disagree that it's arbitrary. It's not arbitrary. The 25% is a number that we, that is measurable. But my, my point about the 25% as far as the all or none, I guess that I would try to introduce to you, is that at least the 25% does allow some fair assurance that if there's something going on in that business, if there's a fire, that our firefighters can actually see in there and see where it's coming from, and should they open the door here or there? Or a police officer who responds can at least have some gap to see in. It's not a three to six foot gap. And I was actually not for the three to six foot gap. But I am for some sightline, some capability for them to be able to see in there. I think it's safer for our police and fire. So I would not go for the all for a litany of reasons. But I don't think none is appropriate either. So we kind of are sitting here going, "Well, where's it going to be?" And we could, you know, we could, I think 25 is a good.
I've thought through this a little bit.
Yeah, sure.
I think you can tell. So, so let me, this particular argument came up about, you know, the discussion about safety and emergency responders. If an issue in a particular business, I don't think you're going to address it with 25% sign ordinance to say, "There's just some way." I mean, there's plenty of things that could happen that are going to cause an unsafe situation in a business. What we have to do is, if there's a situation, identify those. And they may be, I don't know, from what I've been, I've looked at is what has been identified as some of the problem. There's probably 15 or 20, maybe 25. It could be more than that, I guess, of businesses that have no sightline into their business. Then we need to have emergency responders addressing those property owners, those businesses, and saying, "These are the securities that you are putting your employees and your customers at risk at. You are aware of that." Now, some have said, "Well, you need a hammer from the government to say, 'Well, you've got to get, we got to have a certain sightline by restricting the signs in their window.'" That is not the place of government to say that. You need to develop a relationship with your first responders to go into these businesses and tell them that they have an unsafe situation. And if that's the case, and then address all the other things. Because I don't think if you had an open window, if this situation was unsafe, there may be other issues that are taking place. And if it's something that they're at risk of, of some illegal activity going on behind a full windowed, a covered window, then that needs to be addressed anyway. Just requiring a certain number of signs in the window is not going to limit some kind of illegal activity that could go on behind that glass. I mean, I don't think we're going to solve those problems with a limited, a certain amount of sign coverage on a window. They're still going to have to be addressed.
And Bill, you're right. I mean, in a sense, I mean, whether, you know, you can put blinds up in the window and completely block the window, you can brick over the window. But on the planning commission, I look at it from a perspective of. I look at it from a perspective of, the reason I have windows in my house is not so I can put signs in them. Of course, I'm not running a business in my house, but it's so you can see in and out. When we approve windows on the planning commission for a commercial building, we do that with the understanding that they're going to be used as windows, not additional signage, because we approve signage for the building, and we approve the structure of the building and, and the way it's built and everything, but there's percentages that we go by that say, "This amount is glass and this amount is structure," and, and it doesn't have to have windows, but most people choose to put windows in because, you know, it's advantageous. It's safer if you're in a house that has windows or a building that has windows because in a worst-case scenario, you can break it and get out. But, but the, the fact that there's a window there doesn't mean that you have more signage space. If you have two buildings that are exactly identical, and one of them has windows in front, and the guy next door to it has a building the same exact size that has no windows in the front, he doesn't get to go out there and stick signs on the outside of his building the same size as the person who has windows next door to him who has put signs in his windows.
He chose not to have windows.
Right. So, and, and, and if he chooses not to have windows, or the person who has windows chooses to put blinds in them, we're not trying to control whether, what you do inside your business. I mean, as long as it's illegal activity, I'm, I'm good with it, but the, but what we're saying is, from a safety standpoint, if we're not improving the safety of it by having, being able to see in and out, then I, I don't, I don't even know why we're putting windows in them. The, I, I think that, you know, windows are being looked at as signage, and windows are not signage. Windows are windows. And it, what you do inside your business, you can do anything you want to. You can put a Christmas tree behind that window, you can put your, your, your pet cage behind that window, you can put your flower vase behind that window, you can put your string lights behind that window. I don't care what you do behind that window. That's inside your business. That's your property, and that's your business, and, and you do what you want to. But when you attach it to the window with the intentions of people looking from the outside and seeing what's on that window, it has become a sign, whether it's on the window, in the window, or on the outside of the window. And, and, and certainly, I, I, you know, ran a small business over in Northville for 12 and a half years, and, and I wanted people to look inside my business and see what I was doing. I understand the guy who told you that, because, you know, it, I want people to understand that, you know, "Hey, there's, there's a business there." But, but also, when they walk up to the door, I wanted them to be comfortable coming in. You know, I've, I've heard of situations, not necessarily in Murfreesboro, but in Nashville, where, where people have walked in on crimes, not intentionally, but just couldn't see into the building, and they've walked into a crime situation that's already taken place where they've become part of the hostage situation. When a police officer responds to a call at a business or, or an emergency vehicle's called, they're in that same situation. They have to evaluate before they go in to make sure that if there's a person, a crime has taken place, a person's been shot, and they're laying there on the floor, they have to make sure it's safe for them to go in the building and that the building's cleared before they enter it. It, so, so if, if there's no place for them to look in, then you've certainly increased the risk and the hazard.
Well, if that was going to be, if that was going to be the concern, then we ought to have no signs in the window and say, "No signs." And then it's, it's purely, it's easily enforced, and, you know, it can be enforced that way, say, "No signs in the windows," if that's, if that's the case. And, and to me, the alternative for free enterprise and an individual to have the right to do what he wants to as opposed to no signs in the window, I thought it was, I fall on the side, and I guess we'll just have to say that the council makes the decision, and we'll, we'll live with whatever is decided, but, but I fall down on the side of saying, "There may be other ways of dealing with this," dealing with some security and safety of, of a business and particular businesses in particular areas than arbitrarily saying across the community, "This is what we're going to say," and restricting somebody's right as a small businessman to have signs.
I want to say something real quick. I don't, I, I want to make sure that we, to put this out, that I don't think this is just small businesses. I mean, you can drive and look at many other bigger businesses and chains that have signage on their windows.
Sure.
But I'm, I deal with, in my line of work, codes every day. I'm told where I should caulk, where I should seal, what type of plywood I have to use on a commercial structure. I'm told what sear unit I have to use in the heating and cooling unit. I'm told which way a door should open, which way a door shouldn't open. So, you know, there, there are codes and ordinances in place that we have to go by, and I, I err on the side that, you know, I drive down Broad Street, I drive down Memorial, I drive all over this community, Case and Lane, and there's businesses that have literally covered up every part of their windows, every, every part of the window. You, you cannot see one way in or out of that window, and that's not what windows are for. So, you know, we say, "This is what your sign should be. You get a ground sign, you get a pole sign, you get a lit sign." It's not to say, "Okay, you've got a 12 by 14 storefront window, cover it up." I mean, otherwise, let's just say, "Here's a door, block the entire building and, and put signs up there." So, I, I lean to the side that I think it's fair, it's a good compromise. No one is ever gonna be happy when we talk about signs. No one's ever gonna be happy. This is a fair compromise, and, you know, the other option is leave it at 15 percent, or the other option is to say, "None or, or all," and I, I don't think I would be for all. So, there had to be some kind of...
Can I, back to the string lighting, all I'm curious about here is how, how we, how will we measure that? Is it gonna be like the outline lighting?
String lighting?
Yeah, so if we...
The way it's currently written, it would not, there would not be any regulations on the amount of string lighting that would be allowed to be on a property.
So, really, it's color is what we're talking about.
Well, do we want it to be unlimited? I mean, is that something, is that outside in, I mean, that's outside or attached to a window, or inside or out?
If it is attached, if it is attached within the window, on the inside of it, it would not be regulated, but if it is attached to the window, it would be regulated, but anything outside would be allowed.
All right. Is it gonna allow string lights on vegetation? I can remember where the...
Currently, the way the ordinance reads, no temporary signs can be attached to vegetation. It would, it would need to be attached to private light poles and decorative pieces of sorts.
Would you guys be up for...
Technically, it would be considered attached. Would it be considered attached if you have, say, a fern that was out front of your, your, your business, and then it's attached through...
I mean, if you had a flower pot on your, in the, on the front of your business, and it had string lights on it, we would not regulate that. It's more if it's a landscaping-type vegetation, something that is required to be, be on the lot?
I, I would be for, I mean, just, so, I mean, again, this is more of a simplicity thing for me from a consistency or simplicity standpoint, but, you know, if, to me, I'd be for having the string lighting, having some limitations on the amount. And I would say it should be similar to whatever we do for outline lighting, because there is a limitation on that. Am I correct?
You are correct.
Based on the frontage?
Right now, it's currently three square foot per linear foot of a building frontage. So, take, for instance, Logan's Roadhouse. They get, their frontage is probably, say, it's 50 feet, they would get 150 feet of outline lighting.
I know where Bill stands on it, but for you guys, I'll let this thing go if y'all wanna just leave it like it is. I mean, I just don't want to get into this argument too, I mean, this, this piece of it. My personal would be, I mean, I, you obviously want, would want it to be unlimited, but would y'all rather be unlimited or try to put, put something in, because we're gonna have to change what we do if we do anything. Is that right?
What's the thoughts on the, Bill, what would be your thoughts on string lighting? Uh, I would pull it from the ordinance. I, I don't think string lighting need to be regulated.
Okay.
I, I just don't, I, you know, like I say, I could show you some examples of, of where it's, I understand why people are concerned about it, but I don't think it's something that we need to, need to regulate.
Millie, the question we had from one downtown business owner is, not trying to give Judy free publicity, but what Trendy Pieces does now, or Bella's Boutique, is, would that be within the ordinance acceptable?
It would.
Okay.
They have their strong, off their ceiling and through their building, and it's not attached to their windows.
Okay. But anything related to the window is...
Well, I mean, if you have a, a frame on the inside of your window, and you put, you know, the, the clips on it that hold your string lightings, and it went around that on the inside of your building, we would not regulate that.
Mayor, can I make a motion?
Sure.
I'd like to...
Sorry, I...
Go ahead, go ahead.
You know, that, that's the thing about an ordinance, it's not just what it says, it's what you say it says.
Correct.
So, so tell me again, if I put...
If it, you know how people will take Christmas lights, and they can put them around the exterior, you've got a frame, and you put...
Could you come here just a second? Let me let you look at something. Is this permitted or not?
Is that hanging from the ceiling, or is that hanging from the wall?
I, I, I don't know that.
Or the window frame?
I would say the window frame.
If it is hanging directly on the window frame, it would be, it would be a violation. If it is hanging, say, from the top of that, where it's not attached to the window...
Wait, wait. It would be a violation, or it would count towards their percentage?
Count. Well, we don't have a percentage on the string lighting.
That's just on the window side.
I thought, I thought we'd, you were saying, so something like that.
And that, is that a Christmas tree in the background that's...
No, it's the, the frame, the windows is framed with string lighting.
See, I'm, I can't, I can't tell the question.
Okay. You'd have to go, you'd have to go look at it. Okay, okay, I understand.
It, it makes a difference about how it is attached to it.
So, if it's attached to the frame, it's not...
It would just be string lighting. It's not attached to the frame.
Well...
It's inside the building.
That makes, that makes a little bit different than, you know, as to how we would enforce it. I, I don't think, I mean, that, that has a tendency to kinda take away some of the feeling. If, if there's a way for this kind of thing to occur, then, okay.
We're not outlawing string lighting, we're outlawing string lighting on the window frame to a certain extent.
Well, let me ask you, let me ask you for one more other consideration. Okay.
You hadn't heard my motion yet.
I, I, well, before you make your motion, because you may or may not agree with this, could we up that, if you're gonna go with a percentage, can you do something that is easy, I mean, extremely easy? I understand how folding the paper and all that kind of, yeah, I understand how easy that is, but can you go 50, 50, to where you still have some, some, something open, but I can know, if I got four windows, I got two I can cover, if I got one window, I got one window I can cover. Can you, can you go 50 percent instead of the 25?
What was your motion gonna be?
My, my motion is going to be that we approve the ordinance as presented, with the exception of the reference to 25 percent be changed to 50 percent, and that we exclude Section 2, where it refers to string lighting from the ordinance.
I'll second that.
Let me make sure I understand this section.
Yeah, me too.
Section 2, string lighting, outdoor lighting, inflexible construction lighting.
The number 10, string lighting that is white or clear?
The definition of string lighting is in Section 2?
Nobody. So, if I could...
I'm trying to grab the section that refers to the use of string lighting.
That would be exemptions, number 10, B18, Section 23, exemptions, B10, string lighting that is white or clear, any time colored string lighting during the times between November 15th and January 15th.
I would like to exclude that from the ordinance. And I would like first to up the percentage...
That there's, while we were discussing it, I looked through the ordinance to find all the references to string lighting. So, there's three references in there to string lighting, including the definition. And so, if we're taking string lighting out, then it would take out all those sections that refer to that, and I, you know, I have a list of them so we can, we can identify those, but, so it would be the definition of string lighting and the three regulatory languages, the regulatory languages and three specific sections of, of this ordinance.
Any reference to string lighting, I would like removed from the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion that's saying, "Take the percentage to 50 percent and take away string lighting."
Absolutely. That's going from 15 percent to 50 percent, and it's removing string lighting from the ordinance.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah. One of the things that the staff in the planning commission did during this process is we looked at other people's ordinances. Most communities had 25 percent. Some had 15, some had 30. We found one that had 50. But most of the, now, I'm talking about comparing cities of our size in the southeast. We're not talking about Iowa, Montana, New Hampshire, or California.
New York.
Or New York. So, so we looked at what other cities were doing in other parts of the country, and I think that's where that 25 percent came from, is that was consistent with what other cities approximately our size were doing. And to double that arbitrarily, I don't, I don't know if that's a good idea.
I, I think it just makes us more business-friendly, and, and we, you know, we want our small businesses, we want all businesses to succeed. And, and, you know, you're still gonna be able to see in and out, you've got 50 percent of the window space that, that you can see in and out of, you know. To me, when you start splitting the hairs of 30 percent, 50 percent, or, you know, I know we're doubling it, but, but we're still allowing 50 percent of the window space to be open, from my opinion, you know, from a safety standpoint, which is why I keep trying to look at this thing from a safety aspect, is I think that, you know, if 50 percent of the window is left open, maybe I've got a chance to look out and see what's coming, or look in and see what's going on before I step through the door, and...
Can I tell you something about that, just from a math perspective, just that I looked at a couple of times on some windows?
Wait.
Because it matters to what you suggested. We've already been told that the three to six foot zone is really important to our business owners, and we listened. And if you look at the way the windows are laid out, and I literally went around and looked at this on purpose, if you allow 50 percent, you are opening the door to have no sightline on a huge majority of the windows. And when I said earlier that the 25 percent made sense to me, because, you know, look, you, you're, I'm hearing you on a lot of stuff, but I still feel more comfortable from a standpoint of saying, "Look, if there's a window there, and if a police officer or firefighter can see in part of it, that's safer. I'm not gonna waver on that." I think it is absolute in my mind that if, if there's a window there and they can see in it, that makes it safer for that person and probably the people that are in there. So, we might differ on that, but if you allow 50 percent of all windows, the way that this thing is written, you know how you said earlier, you can know, if you've got four windows of equal size, 25 percent allows you to do either one and then none on the other three, or you can do 25 percent, 25 percent, 25 percent, 25 percent. If we're at 50, because of the way that windows lay out, you're gonna be able to cover that exact zone on most windows that we already know, I mean, we, and we wanted, you know, look, we're trying to be appropriate and to do that stuff, but we open it up to have the bottom 50 percent of the window completely covered, and then we lose completely the capability for them to see. So, I, I think there is a safety perspective. I don't really want to step it up to 50 percent tonight. I mean, I'm, I...
Okay. The, the concern that you're dealing with, you have some negotiating room to go to the customer, to have, I mean, the client, the shop owner, to say, "If, if you don't create a sightline that's appropriate, then you still have the room to go to that person, develop a relationship with the shop owner, and say, 'There's 50 percent you can use,' do, take, create a sightline to the appropriate part of your business. If you put it halfway up, we don't have a sightline." And you have this relationship between first responders, police and fire personnel that is established with the people and allowing them to still do their business, but, and have enough room without, because if, if somebody wants to make something obstructive, you know, I can put 25 percent of my window out there, and then I can put a, some type of stock in front of the window to obstruct it as well. So, sign, just having 25 percent of the window covered doesn't create a sightline immediately. the, with the people, establishing a relationship to deal with it, specific situations to a specific business. And I think that's healthier, a healthier way to look at it.
I agree, and, and let's, let's say if you've got 100% of a window space, and you choose to take this 50% that's in the middle, middle of the window, well, you're probably not going to be able to see over the top of it, and the bottom half, if it's covered with vegetation, then you can't see anything. But then again, from my perspective, you wouldn't see anything if there was a brick wall there either, or if they had blinds in there. So, so the, the safety concern of it, if there's an opportunity to see out, it's good, but, but everything is going to have an exception. And I think that we have to decide amongst ourselves what, what is fair, what is, you know, projects ourself as being business friendly, because I think we all want to be that, and, and try to have an ordinance that, that is, is fair, that, you know, I've forgotten about the safety aspect of it myself, because I didn't get what I wanted, and then I've moved on. But, but the, but as far as the perspective of using the space for advertising space, you know, we, we, there is no right number. We could sit here and talk about it all night long, and, you know, if, if we talked about it for a year, we might come up with 37%. I mean, there, there just isn't a number that you can say, this is the exact right number and we nailed it. And so if, if this, if we go from 15% to 50% of window space advertising, I just don't see how we can not be projected as being, trying to work with the businesses, large and small businesses. You know, Taco Bell ate there just about every day, it's free advertisement for Taco Bell, they're welcome. But the, but, but, you know, they use their windows about as much as anybody does, and they're not a small business, but they want people to know that they've got the beefy five-layer burrito on sale this week for $1.99, and they'll fill the window up with it. Now, you know, from, from, in my opinion, I wish they had smaller signs, but, but I'm willing to do business with them because I've got to the point that I'm comfortable eating there, I don't feel endangered, and, and they probably are using about 50% of their windows is the reason I'm using them, for example. I, you know, I can, I can see around it if I need to, you know, the, if, if the windows 12-foot high and they take six foot in the middle, you got the option of being able to jump over the, the six-foot mark or the nine-foot mark. If you jump higher than nine foot, you can look in that way, or you can hit the ground and look in under the bottom three foot. But, but, you know, at some point you have to say, are we doing it for aesthetics? Are we doing it for appearance? Are we doing it for safety? Are we doing it, what are we doing it for? And, you know, as far as signs, you know, I think we want to be business friendly, we want to help the small businesses and the large businesses, and, and I've probably said too much already, so I'm going to stop, but, but, but I'm good with the ordinance as I presented it, and if we vote on it, and we vote it down, then we'll come up with something else.
Ms. Wright, we have a motion in a second.
Mr. Lulance?
No.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
No.
Vice Mayor Young?
No.
Mayor McFarland?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, so we've got the ordinance in front of you.
Hey, can I ask you a question, Amelia? Is it more difficult to measure some other percentage rather than 25 or 50?
It would be approximately the same thing either way.
All right, so in my idea earlier, kind of talking about a few of the things that we had some issues with, you know, let's talk about string lighting, let's talk about percentages before we, before we make a motion. I mean, you know, 25 is the number that we came to, not we, the number that the staff, planning commission came to after 18 months of this, or whatever the timeframe has been, you know, that, because we all have known all along that this percentage is going to be, you know, some number that we know is not, there's never going to be the perfect number, right? I mean, we, we kind of knew that. So, given, given that, and that we've gotten to 25 from this point, based on staff looking at this, and not just looking at it from just an arbitrary number, an arbitrary reason, you know, they, they, we know that they've gone out and they've looked at lots of the windows all around town. Hold on just a, hold on, hold on, hold on.
You need to get the process correct, because the process, it got the planning commission at 15% until Councilman Young presented 25% as an alternative, which raised the percentage from 15 to 25. That's when it raised to 25. It wasn't 18 months of 15 and 18 months of 25, it got...
And during the 18 months of that process, it got to 25. So sometime during that process...
And now it could get to 50 if we would agree with that.
Or 30 or 35.
It could.
Or none. Or zero.
Right.
Or leave it at 15 and start enforcing it.
Can I make another motion?
Yes.
Just, I, I'm going to make a motion that we approve it as presented, with the exception of removing everything involving string lighting.
So that's keeping it...
25%.
25%.
Just as it's presented, with the exception of the string lighting, and I would, I would like to see that removed, because I just, I think it's awfully vague.
I'll settle on that.
Hey, I picked up one here.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Ms. Wright, or, Ms., Ms. Wright, for call the roll.
Mr. Lulance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
No.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right.
It's never pretty.
Oh, and I, I will say to Councilman Shacklet, Councilman Smotherman, Councilman Lance, Mr. Washington, Mr. Young, you guys have been up here longer than we have dealing with signs and know it's never fun, but the great thing about this council is we'll make a decision, we may agree to disagree, and we move right on and work for what's best for Murfreesboro. So thank you everybody for the good dialogue. All right, consider recommendations of the city manager with proposed CIP capital improvement plan.
Mayor, members of city council, Mr. Crumley and I will be tag teaming this presentation. As you know, in October, we had a workshop on the capital improvement plan. We went through the CIP department by department. Now, there have been a few slight revisions and some project cost updates, but now before you is a $313 million capital improvement plan over the next five years. Year number one totals just over $78 million. Now, the CIP includes 108 different projects, and one of the things that we've done in looking at the CIP is, you know, projects that are needed by the city, that's come from input from staff, the community, and our boards and commissions. Some of our projects include the new public safety building for the police department, the headquarters on Highland Avenue. That represents about 42% of the CIP this year, certainly one large individual project, but we've got public safety communications projects in there, funding for the public safety training facility, improvements on North Manny, vehicles for our public safety departments, improvements to Jones Boulevard to get that started, a number of road projects, as well as funding for the Miracle Field, development of the city school parks, and land for the West Park. As we explained in the workshop of city council, we've taken this CIP and looked at our various policies for debt. We'd be glad to go over that if you would like. Again, the CIP that we've put together is within all of those requirements for our capital improvement plan debt policies. And we also included the funding for the debt service in this year's budget, so should you approve this CIP, we would be able to handle it in the current year's budget. I would also say to you that in approving the CIP, that would give staff direction for year one to go begin the process to bring back to you funding for year one. The projects in years two, three, four, and five really become a wish list and kind of a planning tool, but it's only the projects in year one that we would actually be funding. And as I mentioned to you before, approving the CIP tonight does not get any of those projects started. It's going to require an initial resolution that would present it at a council meeting probably in January. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I think Mr. Crumley can talk briefly about a few of the changes from the workshop.
The, the CIP is financially constrained in two different ways. As Rob mentioned, your financial policies that you adopted in 2010 set a number of ratios for us to go by in terms of debt per capita, and debt per assessed value, and other ratios. This plan meets all of those, and to meet all of those, you need to know we cut more than $30 million worth of projects that were submitted out of this request. It is also financially constrained in the first year, because it has to be included in the budget. So year one, which is in the budget, is financially constrained, the five-year look is financially constrained by the policies that you've adopted. There are some changes from what you saw on November 5th at the work session, and if you have your little handout that I gave to you, I'll hit them real quickly. The biggest one is at the very, very bottom of the second page, where Ms. Wright reminded us that we have about $4.8 million of county shared bond funds available for school construction. So we've included that as one of the deducts in this. By moving that almost $5 million out, we were able to move some projects up and make estimates more current on other projects. Under administration, entered the energy savings program, we pulled that forward one year, $2.5 million. Better estimates on the cost of renovating the communications department, and here in the city council chambers, that number went from $117,000 to $305,000. In recreation, we felt like we needed to put the total amount estimated for the Miracle Field into our CIP, even though a significant portion of that may come from other funds. So the Miracle Field of McKnight was increased by $2 million. On the second page, under schools, we added $1 million in year two to their energy efficiency program to match up with what they're discovering from the analysis that's taking place at schools. In solid waste, you'll see a number of capital items there that are all dependent upon the state grant that you considered about a month ago that you have not yet approved. Mr. Smith, Mr. Chris Griffith, and I have been working on that. We'll be ready to bring that back to you, maybe next week, maybe later on, but this document assumes that we would take that state money, which makes all of those capital items 50% state money, 50% local money, and in year one. I already mentioned at the very bottom, the funds available to schools from county bonds. If you've got any questions about any specific project, we'll be glad to try to field them between Rob and I. Again, constrained over the five years by your financial policies, and over the first year by the operating body.
Yes, there's only one comment I had on this that I just wanted to bring up for the council to consider, just between now and when we start talking about borrowing and budget time. As I look at this, it's one of the things that sort of stuck out to me that I want to make sure we address, or, you know, that we get some sort of a, an idea on, you know, only about 10% of this CIP this year is going towards transportation, and I think that's one of the, you know, that's obviously one of the biggest issues that we have here in Murfreesboro. We hear it from our folks, you know, our citizens every day, basically, and we see it every day when we ride around. So I, I do see that in year two, there's a much larger percentage, so I mean, there is some, some kind of end of the rainbow there, but I don't, I want to make sure that we don't get in a situation where, you know, kind of like what you said, that year one is kind of the important thing, years two, three, four, and five is sort of the wish list. We got to be careful not to get in a situation where we're continuing to push that, push that, push that, and I know our hands are a little tied right now with the state situation and what they've, you know, what TDOT is doing. But I'm just bringing it up so that we all have a little extra awareness of that, I'm sure y'all probably already are aware of it, but I want to at least say it out that, you know, we need to make sure we watch that and dedicate what we really can to our roads.
Yeah, Mr. Lulance and I talked about that very point this afternoon, and while the percentage this year, you know, looks a little different than it's been in the past, traditionally, transportation has led the way in our, our CIP. This year's numbers obviously are skewed, because one project represents about half of the CIP with the police headquarters. But if you look in the five-year CIP, we've got $118 million in road projects, and that's over a third of the, the CIP. You know, one of the other things that, you know, got discussed during the workshop, and Mr. Lulance alluded to it as well, and that is our, our partners, and one of our major partners in road construction is the state. You know, two of the roads that we get significant traffic, you know, conversations with our community are Highway 99 and Thompson Lane. Both of those are state roads that are going to be funded and constructed by the state of Tennessee. So continuing to talk to our legislative delegation about how important those two road projects are is clearly a part of it. It is a transportation network that, you know, the city's clearly got a role, and we've assumed that responsibility, and the state does, and we're going to need to continue to work together in those partnerships. But yes, our eye will be on the transportation projects, absolutely.
I guess I'll add to what Rob has said, because, I mean, theoretically, the numbers that we have out here as far as all the developments of Battleground Bridge, Brinkley, Butler, Cherry, Grisham, Haynes, Jones, Kingwood, or Kingdom Drive, Lidle, North Manny, and the list goes on and on. All those roads are going to get improved. Now, the, the ones that we're concerned about are the state roads, because they don't have the money to do it. And, and so, again, we're, you know, we're going to have to hope that the state legislature has the guts to step up and, and do whatever it takes to, to get the money, because, I mean, we're not in a situation with our city that doing maintenance on roads is good enough. We have to have new roads, and Rick's right on point. The numbers are skewed this year just because of the headquarters, but if you take the headquarters out, they're probably about what they would normally be every other year. And, but we, we, you know, our emphasis does need to be on the traffic, but, but we've already got the emphasis on traffic. I mean, trying to do road improvements as we can afford with the money that we've got, but the, the hopeful part is, I think we've got a plan where the money will be there, and currently, I'm not sure the state has a plan where the money will be there. And so, we, we really need to be concerned about Thompson Lane, and Franklin Highway, and Highway 99, and, and all those other projects out there, where we're seeing bottlenecks every day, and, and no sign of improvement in sight, in my, my opinion, unless somebody steps up and says, this is how we're going to fund it.
I want to say that sometimes Mr. Lulance doesn't like to see me coming, because I'm always wanting to know when we're going to fix this road, and when we're going to fix that road, and where's the state on this, and where's the local matching funds, and where are we on this already? And Rick, you're not the only ones that are, that are after them, so to speak, on the, on the road projects. Mr. Crumley, how much do we pay down every year on our debt service?
Last year's principal payment was in the neighborhood of $29 million. That's not just roads, that's all projects, schools, roads, parks, any other facilities, but the principal payment was somewhere in the neighborhood of $29 million.
Well, that...
We pay off about 90% of the city's debt every 10 years.
Well, that'd be fairly consistent, next year would it be similar?
It, it has small bumps in it as bonds mature and roll off the schedule. The last two budgets, we've been the beneficiary of some roll-off, where bonds borrowed 15 years ago were paid, and, and no longer did we have to cover those debt service requirements. I don't have it memorized, but there's a couple of more roll-offs over the next two, three, four years.
Wouldn't that put us in comparison with cities our size way ahead as far as our efficiency and paying off debt?
It, there's only one other city comparable to us in terms of the rapid repayment of debt, and that's Franklin. And they have also chosen 15 years on their debt service schedules as, as what they want to attempt to meet. Murfreesboro and Franklin are far in excess of the other cities. If you remember, we did the analysis for you on the nine Tennessee cities that are AA rated or better, like Murfreesboro, and only Franklin and Murfreesboro are in that top tier of how rapidly we repay the debt.
Okay. Rob, make sure I understand this correctly, and maybe I'm trying to get this in my head. The Cherry Lane project, isn't it actually contingent upon the exit of 8th quarter? You see where I'm coming from? You see where I'm coming from?
The, working with the, the state, that interchange has gone through a justification study and has been deemed justified. Now, Cherry Lane will be a project that will be multiple years in multiple phases, in part because of the practicalities of construction, but also the cost. Now, so I think the, the thought is, we'll, we'll start on the east end of Cherry Lane and work our way toward 840 in phases.
We do have the right of way on that already, though, don't we? We don't, we don't...
We do not have the right of way. That's part of the, the cost, but as you will recall, Mr. Richardson came here a while back, and we approved the alignment. And that alignment then allows the design to become more refined, and when the design gets more refined, then you're able to actually get specific...
But we have the, we have the interchange property.
Yes, we have, we have a portion of it, yes, we do.
Yes.
It was bought from Ms. Chaddick in 1998. We've had that awhile.
Thank you. Do we need a motion?
Yep.
We need a motion to approve the CIP. Does anybody have any more discussion? I will move for approval of the CIP.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We have an appointment on boards and commissions. You're going to have, in front of you, an appointment, reappointments to the Lineball Library Board, and we looked at that last meeting, so we're ready for a motion for this meeting.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
You also have got a recommended appointment for the power board that we're going to look at and then vote at the next meeting. This is from Mr. Lines. So, we'll look at that at the next meeting. You have some, Ms. Wright, some beer permits?
We do. We have a special event permit for the Discovery Center for an event, January 21st of 2016. That particular application is in order. Additionally, we have a new order coming for one of our restaurants at 1615 Northwest Broad Street. That application has met our background requirements, as well as all the building codes inspections. So, that one is ready for issuance upon your approval. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Any payments or statements?
We have two items on your statements tonight, Mayor. One is a recreation debt we owe to the chamber, and the other is fuel for the airport.
Eddie?
I'm going to go ahead and move that we pay the bills.
Second.
Motion is second.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Any other business? Would ask everyone if you would go to the city website, or my Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, tweeting, whatever you want to say, the, the New Year's Day 5K is New Year's Day at 10 o'clock, and that's a 5K run or walk as part of our Better Borough Project. We've already got almost 200 people who signed up. So, you guys can run or walk. There's going to be a beat the mayor race.
How much of the 5K is downhill?
A lot, it's 90...
It's all downhill.
90 percent of it.
I can roller skate 5K downhill.
Mayor, you're going to be somewhere tomorrow night, too. You need to tell everybody where you're going to be tomorrow.
That's right. We have the Christmas tree lighting tomorrow night, 6 o'clock on the square. So, I'm looking forward to that. That's going to be a good event. Santa Claus will be there.
He's coming.
Yep. So, we're excited, excited about the, about the Christmas. So, anyway, y'all share that, get some people to sign up, and hopefully all y'all will be there, if you can, that, that, that New Year's morning. So, 11, 10 o'clock, right, Mr. Goodwin? All right. Thank y'all so much. We'll stand adjourned.
Just a couple of words. Eddie, I think I may have a solution.